It's six o'clock, we'll get started, is everybody kind of, Bill? I believe I'm starting on time. Call the meeting to order pledge is gonna be done by Ms. Lori and Pam, if you don't mind, please do the invocation, everybody stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray.
Father, we just thank you for this time to come together. I want to personally thank you for all of the residents and people around our city that have come here tonight because they care about Mount Pleasant and our environment and how we live. Guys, thank you for that. I pray that we would be with all of us as we make decisions that will directly affect the citizens of Mount Pleasant, that they view decisions made with the best wisdom we have, the best understanding we have, and it always would be for the benefit of the citizens of this town. Thank you again for this day. Thank you for our staff and our first responders, and I pray that you get everyone home safely. In your name we pray.
Amen, amen.
Thank you ladies.
Roll call please ma'am.
Johnson, here. Ms. Alderson, here. Mayor White, here. Mr. Davis, here. Ms. Knowles, here.
All right, approval and correction in minutes, we've got two sets to approve, the study session of July the 10th and the regular session of the 15th. You've had a chance to review those, if you hadn't already, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept study session and the regular session.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries awards, presentations, and appointment to mayor's appointment for the Mount Pleasant Industrial Development Board. Again, we need to have a meeting in order to be able to set our industrial development board up again very quickly. It'll be for one meeting, and this is for the purpose of getting an opportunity to save some money on the gas system. My recommendation for this, and I've spoken with him, and he said he'd be happy to do it for one meeting, is Mr. John Hunter, John currently serves on the planning commission as well. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. John Hunter to the Mount Pleasant Industrial Development Board.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Completion and review from unfinished business. Philip, Shipper, anything? Carrie, anything?
No.
Monthly report from mayor, still making it, we got a little ground to cover still on the square, just for everybody's information. Had a T-Dot grant with that, so they can't plant the greenery until after November and before April, which, as hot as it's been, is probably not a bad thing this year. Probably just die right out and we'd start all over, so that's being done. And we're looking at some other things available for Cherry Glen right now through the county IDB. A lot of you may have seen it, we had a big groundbreaking out there about just after this last meeting for Exentria, 300,000 square foot building is gonna employ about 80 people at about 72,000 a year. So it's a nice little piece of development out there. That's all I've got. Shipper, monthly financial and budget report, please ma'am.
I'm going to keep it short, we're in the middle of audit, and I, when I emailed you all the financials, I put in the notes that the July financials and June financials are all still very preliminary. We have audit in full swing, and we should be closing our books for last fiscal year here next week. We have till August 31st to close those books, and then we will officially start the process of probably having auditors on site starting September. So just, y'all have any questions that the numbers are gonna look different every time we make adjustments, because we have till end of this month of adjustments. Y'all have any questions for me?
Any questions for Shipper?
No.
Got the budget approved very quickly again this year?
We were approved at the beginning of July, so we were good, we submitted it. I don't have the date on me, but it was approved first or second week of July.
Yeah.
You said the audit was started in September?
We've actually, preliminary audit started in July, so we've been doing stuff with them in July, we're going to do some testing with them this next week, and then officially they'll be here from September to probably December. It may be physically here, but a lot of this stuff is happening through online stuff now, we just upload everything that you does to insecure portals.
Appreciate what you do.
Yeah, amen.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Now, were the questions entertain a motion for Shipper's financial and budget?
Here, I'm like, a motion approved of monthly financial budget report, ask presenting.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from city manager, Philip?
Mayor Commissioners, update on Air Mine's bathroom, waiting on the final electrical inspection, it should be closed out, but they should be in the next week or so. Starting a couple of planning for some activities, October 4th is the date we set for the Gardenia Park and the dedication to Ms. Celeste Wilson. More details to come on that, so, but October 4th for that. Just want to go ahead and plug the October 17th, 18th barbecue festival, several vendors and food vendors have already signed up, more details to come with that as well. We did hire one person this month in the fire department, Mr. Eric Barnett. He comes from the city of Pulaski, he's paramedic and certified, so in a few weeks he'll go right to shift. And then lastly, bring your attention to state and city, second, well, it's gonna be the third page this time, no, it's gonna be the fourth page. But Captain Duncan, recognized for, he's a chap, Captain with the fire department, served since 2019, he also served as our chaplain, and we recognize him as our recognition of the month.
That it, Philip?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Special reports from other city departments, wastewater liaison.
Mayor Commissioners, you had a detailed report from Matthews from Barge on our study session, details are in your packets, but we do have substantial completion on the plant, should close out the next 30 days, and then we'll set a date toward the new facility soon.
Okay, good. That it on wastewater?
Yes, sir.
Gas?
As you know, the rate study is still underway, and then you'll have on the agenda night to prove that letter of credit for the new gas discount.
Perfect. All right, is that all you got?
Yes, sir.
All right, new business. Ordinance 2025-1135, again, this is going to be the first reading. An ordinance amending Title 14 zoning and land use control, Chapter 2 zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant municipal code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning map incorporated therein by property contingent upon annexation, the high-density residential R3 zoning upon annexation. This is at the corner of Trotwood and Zion Road. We did a, on Thursday night, we had a good hour-plus-long conversation concerning this property and heard a lot of good things. And it's, we're here tonight to have the vote. The first piece we need to discuss is the zoning. Cory and I talked to this extensively to make sure we followed this as we should. So the first thing that we would have a discussion on is the zoning. And we have, just for everybody's information, we have four facts of findings that we have by our bylaws that we have to cover with this. And I'm just gonna read through those, and we'll have a brief conversation just as we did from Thursday night about each. And the first one is, the amendment is in agreement with the land use plan for the area. We already have some R3 in this community. If you look a lot around downtown, there's just about every bit of it's R3. It calls for that to be where it can have amenities to that group for R3 to be able to do that. And as we discussed in that meeting, if you look in the vicinity of where this is, you've got a dollar store you could walk to, you've got a convenience store, and you've got two restaurants that are right there. That's something we've looked at very closely in our other R3 redistricting or rezoning that we have done. So is there any conversation about number one?
I know that's something that we discussed during the, I'm on the planning commission as well. And we discussed that, and I wasn't really aware of what was surrounding it when we voted that down at that point, so I did want to make that point.
Mayor, I guess when you look over the high-density residential, some of that is a little misleading, because it says, you know, should be located adjacent to downtown. Don't say must or shall, so there's a little leeway. But when I get on down through there and I read, I just don't know about the apartments, the land adjoining. This land doesn't have apartments, or it doesn't have condos, and I'm not exactly sure what, you know, that's Columbia, it's not us. But this land will join Columbia, which is, and I don't know what H U, I don't know what hood is, I don't know what their, you know, their language is for theirs. I don't know if that includes apartments, if it's only homes, I don't know. But, you know, to me, I think the property needs to stay with, with what's in that adjoining area.
And we just-
And that, and I, you know, that's just me. And, you know, mine would be, you know, another land.
Well, it's, and our looks at this too, is if you look at all the adjoining property across the street and from everywhere up and down the street, all of that property is currently zoned in a non-conforming use, and has been for, I'm not even gonna guess how many years. So you would have property directly across the street and just down the street that would also be non-conform. And, because it's there now.
That's down the street, that's not, you know-
Well, across the street from it is directly across the street on Zion Road is currently non-conform for what it was zoned for. But ever how many years ago they decided that they were going to approve it as a non-conforming use? Now, I can't go back that far and decide who was on the commission and who was on the planning commission to approve that, but it has been a number of years. Just so I'm pointing out everything we know, so we can be very open about all of it.
And so, non-conforming, just for y'all's knowledge, means that it was already a certain use. And then y'all came in and zoned it a different use. And so what is there is different from what it's approved to be. And so long as that old use continues, it's allowed to keep going. But that's a non-conforming use. But it might look on the map like all of those are R1 or commercial or whatever, but what he's saying is that what's actually there differs from what the zoning map sets. So that's, this commission set the zone.
That's correct. Any other discussion on number one? There will be no adverse effect upon adjoining property owners unless such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare. We discussed the fact that this, in the realization of it in pure cold hard dollars, this would generate a ton of revenue to this community in both property tax and in building permits. It would be approximately, and I'm just guessing at this, it's, what do they say, two and a half, 2.7 people per household now? You're talking about adding a minimum of about 600 people that would be taxpayers and buyers in this community. They would be purchasing things from this community, which they would pay sales tax on. So it, it would be for the public good for that to happen to help offset what we currently have. And that's kind of where we left it up. Open up the floor for discussion on that again, please.
Mayor, the only thing I have, I guess, this adjoining property will join, I guess, what is called light industry. And there are railroad cars there, and I'm gonna go back to True Rail, or this, where I'm going with on this, it's a business inside the city. But before True Rail moved in, it used to be the box factory. And people, you know, in that neighborhood complained a lot about the noise. And, which I live on Polk Lane, and I can hear the rail cars over there, and I can also hear them loading. And I realize these people that buys these houses, it's not gonna know that until they move in. And then once they move in, they're gonna say, hey, what about this? Well, I'm sorry, you should have done some investigation. And there are lights there, and I just don't know if that's gonna, which I'd have, which I realize what we're doing, then it has to go back to the planning commission, and they'll decide, you know, what to put up for a boundary, you know, for a buffer zone. And hopefully that will help or whatever. And, but I, you know, it's hard for me to, to vote for it, just, you know, on that right there for my thinking, because it is a lot of noise there. And I do realize it is money for the city. I do realize that. But money's not everything. Money's not everything for me. And that's where I stand.
Okay, anybody else?
I just want to say I don't see no adverse joining the property, because if we're looking at railroad tracks and industries, we're getting houses built right now by GPC, I hear. They write under a plant in railroad tracks, and as far as money for Mount Pleasant, we could use the money, because we have streets and other things that we could get fixed from that. And by this coming up, no citizen of Mount Pleasant, city has called me against this, so I have to do what's best for Mount Pleasant, so I don't see no problem with the adjoining properties. Owners being affected.
Anybody else?
Well, I, I think, I'd know, I do not see any adverse effect either for this property, for the surrounding environment. You've got 700 houses going in right next door, which we have no benefit of at all. This land belongs to somebody else, doesn't belong to us, so we can't decide what's gonna happen there. And so in my mind, and this may not pertain just to this one, is if we have the opportunity to have quality homes that will represent Mount Pleasant and benefit Mount Pleasant, then I think that that's actually a help to the surrounding environment. And so that's, that's where I stand on that part.
I've had calls from citizens both from Mount Pleasant and in the area. And most of the calls that I've received are not in favor of the zoning, which puts me in quite a pickle. But it's really saying, the citizens of Mount Pleasant are who hired me, and they have spoken, giving their voice.
There you go. Any other discussion on number two? Number three, no property owner or small group of property owners will benefit materially from the change to the detriment of the general public. And again, I'm gonna revert back again to number two, there's no small group of people that will benefit from this. When you're talking about adding roughly 600 people, that's not a small group in this community, that's growth of about 10% or so. The owners would be people buying the homes, so it would be, I don't see how material it would benefit from them, other than having a roof over their head, and I want everybody to have a roof over their head. So we, we discussed this at length, and I'm just kind of narrowing down what our discussion was. So we'll have a discussion about that. Whoever'd like to go first?
There's nothing there, you know, that I could say no on that.
Okay, anybody else?
Nothing I can disagree with.
All right, number four, conditions affecting the area have changed to sufficient extent to warrant an amendment to the area's land use plan and subsequently the zoning map. Again, it, this area is changing, as somebody just mentioned, you're gonna have 700 homes right up across the street, basically. So there is sufficient extent to warrant an amendment because of the fact that it's coming anyway. It's here, whether we want it or not. We have approved some R3 already, it's within the community, as Mike brought up, it is close to, right next door to a plant across the street. So that was pretty much our discussion on that. It took a while to have that discussion, I want everybody to understand, we spent quite a while here having this discussion, which was excellent, why we did it. So I'll open up discussion on number four. Anybody?
I think it's be on four. He's asking about four, but I'm sure you'll have a chance to pick one.
Yeah, you will.
I have no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
So what I'd like to do now is just kind of open it up, Mike, if you want to go first and just give your overall?
I have.
Ms. Lori? Pam?
Well, I want you to know that I think this has been the toughest thing any of us have had to, to deal with since I've been on the commission. And I have gone backwards and forwards and backwards and forwards. And in fact, I didn't actually come to my conclusion what I wanted to do tonight till last night. Some of you may see me, I walk all over town. And as I was walking last night, I'm seeing, you know, what's going on in the sports team, kids playing and all that, the new businesses on Main Street that are opening up, just the, people are excited. And I, one of the things that happened, not this week, but a couple weeks back, was met two ladies on the square that were having a Sunday for the grill, and one of them had lived here for five years, and the other had lived here for generations. And they both were excited about it, because they see what's happening at the airport, they see what's happening with our Main Street, they see what's happening in our, our business community, the, Cherry Glen, we're getting some amazing things happening there. And so it just kind of hit me, we're moving forward, the city's moving forward, we want to move forward in the right way. I've come from a lot of places that were overbuilt and destroyed by not being smart about what you do. But I believe, and I've done research, I went and visited, I said this last meeting, I went and looked at some of the developments that the mayors have done, and they're beautiful, and they're well done, and it's something we could be proud of. And so I feel like I want us to keep moving forward carefully and with due diligence, but for me, I think that we, very, very least, we need to go ahead and approve this and have a public meeting, and so more of you can share your opinions. But I, tonight, I want us to keep moving forward.
Winnie?
I guess I can agree on what Pam said, you know, we do our four founding facts, and I see where we're, went by our own ordinance, so growth is coming this way, and we can't tell people not to sell their land, that's not what we're business for. We're here to see that Mount Pleasant grow and grow in the right order and do stuff for our little town. All you hear is we don't have, we don't have, we need, we need. And by having growth, we eventually get there, and we don't want too much growth, but I guess I am for this as well.
Is that it? I'm, I've struggled with this, I'm not gonna tell anybody any trouble, any stories about it. I, I've sat up at the meeting before, y'all know me, I'm gonna tell you just exactly how I feel. And I've ridden up there, I can't tell you how many times to get a look at it. And I look down the street, and you've got apartments, you look down the street, and you've got basically a trailer park. You look at the, the financial benefit that this could have to this community, the development this could have to this community, and then what it could do for our downtown that we have just been a fortune of, and what it could do for that. And it's coming, like it or not, it's coming. The county's currently looking at completely rewriting their whole zoning and planning, and there is a section in it to cover R3. Now, I wouldn't encourage you to go through all 238 pages of it yet, but there's a lot of them in there. And so that's where I am with it. So if everybody having their opportunity to say something, I would entertain a motion for approval of the zone.
I guess I, one other thing, which, you know, I'll, I'll agree, you know, there is a trailer park there. I don't want those people, those are good people that lives in that trailer park.
Yes, I'm not-
So when we say a trailer park, I don't want to say, you know, that it's, that they're bad people or whatever, I just-
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying what, what the use is currently. Not one thing about it. So with that, entertain a motion.
So what does the motion need to say?
So you have the ordinance, hey, Michael's put it up on the-
Screen.
Screen, I think, and you all have it in your packet, but this is first reading, this is just for the zoning. This would say that this property would be zoned as R3 if it's annexed, so it's contingent upon annexation. The ordinance as written includes accepting the findings from your green and orange and red cards. But if you wanted to add any additional comments, or specifically say that, we would add that into the draft for next time. This one, as you know, the planning commission, it comes from a negative recommendation from the planning commission, but you are the board that actually passes or changes their zoning. You can vote for or against this ordinance, it is, for R3 if annexed. So that's what's being considered, yes, sir.
But when you said negative, it was a positive from the planning commission, right?
No, the planning commission did not recommend R3.
Okay, okay.
We, we agreed to annex, we, there was in favor of the annexation, but not R3.
Okay, not the, okay.
That is correct.
And that is included in, as an exhibit to the ordinance and draft, and in your packet as well.
Yes, part of it. Any other questions? That being said, I'd entertain a motion.
Say that's right. I make a motion that we accept ordinance 2025-1135, first reading, for a change of zoning to R3.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll make the motion.
For approval? Got a motion and a second, roll call please ma'am.
Johnson, here. Ms. Alderson?
Yeah.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Knowles? Three years, two days.
Okay. Motion passes. All right, number two is the annexation of the property into the city of Mount Pleasant. And I think this follows a lot of what we just voted on.
Yep. At a public hearing for the annexation.
So we're ready to go to B?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Okay.
I told, I told Cory, once we got through this, I was gonna lean on her. B, Resolution 2025-41, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, by owner consent and approving a plan of services. And for everybody's information here, that will set the public hearing.
Yep, so applicant John Mayer Builders, with the consent of the property owners, submitted an application for annexation of approximately 106 acres- submitted an application for annexation of approximately a hundred and six acres located off of Trotwood and Old Zion Road. This is a proposed annexation by owner consent. This is not initiated by Mount Pleasant. A property can only be annexed into the city pursuant to a plan of services for the territory proposed for annexation. The plan of services was prepared and reviewed by the city staff, but it reflects the services requested by the applicant. This is the first resolution in the annexation process. The purpose of this resolution is only to set a public hearing on the proposed annexation and the plan of services. This resolution as drafted sets that, that public hearing for September eleventh, twenty twenty-five at five P M. in this commission room. A copy of this resolution will be published in three different locations in Maine, in, in three different physical locations and in Main Street Murray. Um, notice of the public hearing will also be published. Um, the annexation and the plan of services were reviewed and recommended by the planning commission at the last public hearing. Tonight, again, is not a public hearing, but you are free to discuss the elements of the plan of service and, and or the annexation as a whole.
I got it?
That's, yes.
Okay. Uh, again, as Cory pointed out, we have discussed this, and my recommendation would be that we have the public hearing on, we could have picked a better day other than nine eleven, uh, on September the eleventh. And I would recommend that we start that at five o'clock here so that everybody has plenty of time to come speak to it. Um, what I would recommend for that is that, um, during that time, that we know there was gonna be a lot of people here for it. We understand that and we completely understand that, welcome it. Um, but that you try to gather together because you're only gonna have three minutes, okay? That if you've got a large group that is opposed or for, that maybe you kind of get together and have one person speak so that we don't, so that you, everybody gets an opportunity to have their voice heard, although it may not be your voice, but you can raise your hand and say, I support this. Uh, and we'd like to, and it will start at five o'clock here. Uh, and we will have plenty of seating, just like we do now, because I would expect there to be a big crowd. So, um, would entertain a motion that we have that meeting, Cory? Is it correct time to do that?
So this is your discussion on that resolution as a whole. So yes, it, the purpose of it is to set the public hearing, but you can also talk about the plan of services or any other elements of that if you'd like.
Any other discussion on that?
Maybe just to be clear that, um, we are not providing water to this property. Columbia is providing the water to the property, so it's not taking from our water. Um, we will be getting the electrical, correct?
Correct, yes.
So we will be getting funds from the collection of the electrical fees. And then they're having their own septic system, um, which if you had been here, I wish you had been here on Thursday because we had an incredible presentation on that. Um, I think that put a lot of us a little more at ease, a lot more at ease, at least for me. Um, but we are not ta- taxing our water system. And in fact, um, and I was concerned about, I brought up and we all discussed about why they weren't tapping into our, um, new sewage system, but, um, it's really too far to build the line. And so this will actually give us more room for other growth, um, because we won't be taking up so much of that wastewater plant.
Right. Any other discussion, Mike?
Mayor, you know, I hate to be a negative person, but to me, I guess, when a city says, you know, I'm coming into an area, annex an area. I should be providing these services, not Columbia or, or somebody else. And if you can't provide the services, it all goes back, it is about money. It goes back to, it, it is about money because that's what Mount Pleasant is gonna receive from this, is taxes. And it is about money. And then you take part of this property that is in the city limits of Columbia. And we can't take that property.
Where it's not in the city limits of Mount, uh, Columbia, Mike.
It is in the city limits of Columbia. It more, three hundred feet of two forty-three is in the city limits of Columbia. And don't sit there and tell me no.
From what it's being annexed.
I'm just saying this property comes right to the city of Columbia.
It touches.
It touches. Yes, it touches.
Yeah.
Or that whole two forty-three should be Mount Pleasant. And it's not. It's part of it is Columbia. And again, you know, if it's not Mount Pleasant, it's not Mount Pleasant. I'm sorry, but that's just the way I am on this.
Okay, that's fair. Anything else? Anybody? All right. Entertain a motion to set the public hearing on nine eleven at five o'clock here at City Hall. On the resolution.
Make the motion that we set resolution twenty twenty-five forty-one for a public hearing on September ninth at City Hall, eleven, September eleven, sorry.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, plug, roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Johnson? Yes. Uh, Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
It's not.
Is this just to set the public?
Just to set the public hearing, correct, Cory?
Yes.
Yes.
So three, four yeses, one nay.
Okay, thank y'all. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-two, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to authorize the city to approve task order number two, general wastewater system assistance to a professional services agreement with Bard's Design Solutions.
The, the purpose of this resolution is to approve, um, the general wastewater services that just were outlined and also for the lagoon inspection. This is part of a contract that you've already approved. The cost will be fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars in the timeframe. It's one year. The scope of work is set forth an exhibit that's attached and also included in your packet. I think Shiffrin spoke at the study session, but you budgeted this amount already.
Yes. Any discussion?
Mayor, if none, I'll make a motion in favor of resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-two.
Got a motion? We got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-three, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant to authorize the industrial development board of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to issue a letter of credit.
The, the city purchases natural gas from the munigas program, which is a joint purchasing program. This program allows the city to purchase gas at lower than market prices, then sell to customers at your regular market price. And the city can use these savings for infrastructure improvements. The city would like to add a few of the industrial heavy gas users to this program, but munigas requires that those purchases, uh, be supported by a letter of credit. Um, the purpose of this resolution is to authorize Mount Pleasant's industrial development board to issue that letter of credit so that these industrial users can join the program.
Any questions on this? We discuss this at length, too. Hearing none, entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-three as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-four, a resolution extending Project Major Oak's timeframe to enter into a pilot agreement. Cory, you want to touch that right quick?
Yeah. So last year, the, you all approved a pilot framework for Project Major Oak. That project was not, has not completed its pilot agreement within the year timeframe that was allowed, and they've asked for a ninety-day extension. The Murray County I D B is in charge of executing this pilot agreement, and they have already approved this extension. So the purpose of this resolution is just to approve the ninety-day extension so that Project Major Oak can enter into a pilot agreement if they still want to.
Correct. Any questions on this? It's just ninety-day extension. We have already approved it. They just trying to get their.
Yeah.
Ducks and grow and collie, yeah. Any questions on this? Comments? Entertain a motion.
Motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approved Gray Lane paving bid.
Mayor Commissioners, um, we opened bids, uh, last week and we received four bids. We're requesting that you approve nickel contracting at sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and twenty-one cents. That will go from North Greenwood down to Gray Lane and, uh, milling, repaving and trucking.
Correct. Any questions on this? It actually came in a little over than I thought, which is a nice little surprise.
Led somebody local.
Yes, amen.
I think all of them were local, yeah. But he's a good person.
Hearing no discussion, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Gray Lane bidding to nickel contracting L N C.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approved U V disinfectant at wastewater treatment plant bid.
Mayor Commissioners, we opened bids with that last week as well. We had three bids. The lowest bid is seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in addition for the U V light at a wastewater treatment plant from the community development block grant. Uh, it is almost two hundred thousand over budget as far as the grant and the match. Uh, we feel like we have a plan to match that with the ARPA, which is next on the agenda that we can't do all of.
Correct.
If you have anything to add to that?
What?
Only thing I, I got, Mayor, I've read up on, on some of that right there. And that, that, that will be money we'll spend.
Oh, well, so, yeah. Amen. Any comments? Discussion? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the U V disinfectant at the wastewater treatment plant bid.
Okay.
As presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approved ARPA water line replacement bid.
Mayor Commissioners, this is from the, um, ARPA grant back from twenty twenty-three. Um, we did put it out to bid. It was over budget, five point six million dollars. We had about approximately two and a half million. So when we bid it, we had four sections. We are going to request that you approve two of the sections. The first one is part three, line C, North Main Street. And what that is, is Magnolia at the connection at the bridge around Magnolia. That cost is, I'm sorry, I told you the wrong one. Part one, line A, Magnolia is four hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. We are not recommending part two, which is a total of four million dollars, and we're not recommending part four, which was forty-six thousand dollars. We are recommending part three, line C, North Main Street. And that is the north end, uh, at the tile plant all the way to the end of our connection. And that is one point one seven four million, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is a, um, we believe thirteen percent match. And then we'd already allocated and laid around almost eight hundred thousand dollars for the project. But that's where we're going and picking up the extra off of the wastewater from that.
They've done, thank y'all for the work y'all done on it, just split out what's gonna have the biggest value for the money that we have been appropriating. Any questions on that? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the A R P A water line replacement bid as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approved two thousand fourteen property tax write-offs.
So per state law, we're allowed to, or the county collects up to ten years of property, delinquent property taxes. And every year we have to write that tenth year off. So whenever we start fiscal year close, we write off that tenth year. So make sure we're right up to two thousand fifteen. But state law allows for counties to collect underland tax for ten years. So after ten years, we just write them off our books. So this is just formality for me to have on my notes before I have staff write them off the books. That this is how much we're writing off for two thousand and fifteen. So this is the amount that we were, thousand and seventy dollars altogether is what we were unable to collect between city and county towards these taxes.
What?
Mayor, uh, that's something that has to be done, you know, because
Yes.
it's on the book, so it has to be done. But at the same time, I guess, those names are still, I guess, in the system or whatever. And if, if they came back, we could say, oh, hey, you owe us some money.
It's property taxes and.
So, so no.
Utilities.
Utilities here. This, okay.
Property taxes, whoever bought that property would have, at this point, because they're delinquents, their property would have gone into delinquent taxes and stuff. If it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
The statute of limitations is ten years. So we, Mount Pleasant, I'm pretty sure filed, I filed its first ever delinquent tax lawsuit, I think in two thousand twelve. And so that could go ten years back. And so we've been writing off
The tenth year.
The tenth year every time. But that's why it's a small number, at least.
Yes, it's a small number.
Yeah. Thousand, one thousand and seventy dollars is what we're writing off. But if you pull up any of these parcels for that fiscal year, it would go to zero.
Any other questions for Shiffrin? Hearing none, entertain a motion to do the property tax write-off.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the twenty fourteen property tax write-offs.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General comments from citizens. And I am just gonna guess that everybody on this list has signed up to speak about the rezoning and annexation. Uh, you're welcome to say a word or two tonight if you would. Uh, but I would highly encourage that you attend that meeting on the eleventh because that's when the real discussion is going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
And it's going to be very open. Again, I want to reiterate that everybody will be kept to three minutes. That's why I'm encouraging if you have a group or groups of people that would like to kind of join together to speak, that you do that so that we don't just, all of a sudden, we've got twenty people or less spoken and there's fifty that want to speak. Okay? I would encourage that you try to get your groups together. And, uh, as I said, each one of them can say, yes, I support what they're saying. And, uh, because we don't want to go on for days with it, but we want to make sure everybody's got time to speak. That's only fair. Okay?
That is the, the same, your study session starts at six.
Yes.
All night.
That's right. That is correct. So, uh, any questions about that? We usually don't ask that, but that's the way that we have decided to do this. That way, everybody has the opportunity to speak that would like to speak.
Can we just tell them that we're not allowed to comment on comments tonight?
Yeah. So, uh, citizen comment section is this, the audience's chance to address the commission. It's not a question and answer session. They won't talk back. They will just say thank you for your time and move forward. Um, same, same rules for the public hearing, but, uh, if, I think the mayor is about to open this up for the three minutes for anybody that wants to speak tonight. Right?
Correct. Uh, we can. Jeff Brewer?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, is this address a resident of the city of Mount Pleasant?
No. Thank you. I'm not, we're a county. May I hand you, give each one of you these, please? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, I'm just gonna take these three minutes and just, uh, speak to this, uh, rezoning proposition from a, uh, position of preserving that land. Um, this property in question is a significant piece of history relevant to the entire nation that has been neglected over the years, but we now have the means to change that through joint venture preservation efforts. We just need the will. Um, I've assembled this information packet as a crash course orientation effort to bring awareness, um, to, to what's at stake. The first exhibit in that packet is, um, the actual, it's a copy of the actual map of General Cox's third division, twenty-third corps, uh, referencing the twenty-fourth of November, eighteen sixty-four. The opposing forces that you see, uh, next to Neely's Mill, that, those battle lines were formed after a fight that started on this land that we're talking about annexed. The second thing, this, the second exhibit you have is the Civil War Battlefields Preservation Act of two thousand and two, in which Congress set forth the means and direction to create public and private partnerships to preserve essential battlefields. The third exhibit that I The third exhibit that I have uh, prepared for you is uh, an overview of the Government Advisory Commission as it relates specifically to Tennessee. In in it is revealed that the United States government has designated this land we're talking about uh, as a central Civil War battlefield for preservation to include interpretation if possible. The last thing I have is the American Battlefield Trust map showing that not only is this land in question of the battlefield study area, which is the beige uh, boundary here. If you look here, this specific land we're talking about annexing is in the core battlefield area, which is significant as relating to as to why it should be preserved. The last two attachments that I've got in that packet are joint letters written by, written to this body by the Tennessee Wars Commission, the Tennessee Historic Commission, the Tennessee Civil War Preservation Association, the National Battlefield Trust, the American Battlefield Trust, urging you not to rezone this land. It's key to know and to see in this map that Congress has said that this is in the core battlefield area. If you study that campaign, and I've studied it a lot, that that, the 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 weather, the time, the fluidity of the movement and the type of the action. Capron had twelve hundred men when he met Forrest at at Hickenville. He had eight hundred when he rallied back into Columbia. There's four hundred men missing along here, and there's no records of them being buried. General Chalmers recorded losing a hundred and eighty-six men in November, and the vast majority of Chalmers' action was there in that field. So and I bet, I guarantee you, the developer who's here doesn't know that there is a real possibility, and that's why it's in the core area, that they're gonna dig up an American soldier out there. So people need to know that, and I promise you that nobody in this room understood, knew this before at at least July the ninth, because that's when I started digging and finding this out. So I would humbly, I'm passionate about it, I apologize if I'm speaking too loud, but.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brewer, thank you very much. Joel Rainey? Gonna wait until?
Don't, don't.
Don't, yeah.
Okay. Jim Harrison?
Yes.
Oh.
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Jim Harrison. I live at sixty-four nineteen Old Zion Road.
Is that a property inside the city limits of Mount Pleasant?
No, but you're about to touch me. I come to you as an adjoining property owner to the Armstrong land. All of this conversation that you've had is gonna be touching my property. Talk about connectivity. We're gonna be intimate. The way that the drawings are made, there's gonna be a sewer septic system in my backyard. That brings me a little distress. So I've talked to a few real estate agents, some land surveyors, and they tell me, they all agree actually, that my property value is gonna be impacted and that it's gonna go down. I bring that to you so that you can put a face to a name to a real situation. Commissioner Johnson, you put, posted on social media on July the eleventh, a beautiful picture from your front porch. You're taking that away from me. I'm not gonna be able to post my property like that anymore. So I I bring to you, commissioners, mayor, don't make me move. Let's rethink this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Croft?
I am a taxpayer in the city of Mount Pleasant.
Good.
Two zero five one Trilogy Lane, also landowner. I'm gonna reserve my comments for the, for the public hearing, but I will tell you that you have a room full of people here in opposition to this motion. I suspect probably the only person who's really in favor for is the developer who's sitting on the back row. I'm sure he's a fine gentleman. I'm sure he builds a fine quality product. But again, this is the wrong zoning for this parcel. You've moved us to the end, Mr. Mayor. You've moved us to the end to suppress our voice here. You've already decided what you're gonna do. I've had full confidence this commission has already decided what they're gonna do. They're gonna go through the motions, they're gonna listen to the public comments, but I'll tell you briefly that R three is wrong. Your own zoning ordinance says it's wrong, Ms. Johnson. It says it's wrong. It says it should be adjacent to downtown, and it's not. It says it should be adjacent to commercial activity. There's a bean field next to it, Ms. Johnson. It says it should be walkable. Nobody's gonna get on Trotwood Highway, walk to Shell. Nobody's gonna get on El, on, on Trotwood Highway and walk to El India. These people are not coming to Mount Pleasant. These people are taking their car somewhere else. They're right next to forty-three highway, and that's exactly where they're gonna go. So I'll look you in the eye, and I'll tell you, this is the wrong zoning for this parcel, and I'll have further comments the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Dawson Gray?
I'm Dawson Gray, thirty-one forty-three North Cross Bridges Road.
Is that in the city of Mount Pleasant?
No, sir. Right up South Cross Bridges Road and then on North Cross. But I am the former president of board at Saint John's Church. I was on the executive committee for thirty-two years. And I spoke at the planning commission. And uh, some of y'all were there. So I don't need to repeat all of that. But we urge you to hold off, wait, give us time to get the American Battlefield Trust involved in this. This is a vital and important development that has occurred since the last meeting. And one thing that'll really drive that home to you is Colonel Robert Beckham. He was General Hood's artillery chief. And he was given the ninety-nine cannon to go to Columbia as Hood went across Davis Ford and around toward Spring Hill. And he was killed up there on the Duck River bluffs trying to pin down the Yankee encampments to allow Hood to go around. And they eventually, as you know, met in front. And Robert Beckham is buried at Saint Peter's Church. He was part of Stephen D Lee's Corps from Virginia, and he is a Virginia native. But he is buried here, right behind the doors of Saint John's. So we have so much history here. And I ask you to do for, for as long as we can get the American Battlefield Trust, the Tennessee Historical Society, I know Patrick McIntyre, he'll come down here. And we hope that you all will allow that, because this is important land, hallowed ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Borkew? I know I probably butchered that up.
First time that's ever happened. Now, this is more on the technical side. Some of you know, we've been been talking to some of the groups. And one of the questions that we need to to have answered, because we haven't been able to resolve between in ourselves, because we we didn't, we're not, we're not in agreement. I heard some conversation, I understand we have a rep from, from uh, Mayor back there. My understanding from from, if that's him, his, the comments that that he's made, is that the two hundred and forty-seven unit number was the max that could get on that property and support it with the amount of land that they have for the distribution of the wastewater. The 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 size of the wastewater area limited the number of units that could go in there. Uh, the the issue is if that's the case, and it's not an issue of of building plants and that kind of thing, it's, it's moving that boundary between the distributional, the sewage area and the the building area to the point where it balances out the number of houses and the amount of wastewater treatment area. So if that's the case, where's the margin for error? What if the the soil does not absorb the sewage as it's expected to, as they think it will? And I think there's been some comments that uh, have affected, that that put a question mark on that. How good a job did the scientific, the soil scientists do in examining the depths and so forth? And to really get a handle on how much that land can handle? Because if he's off, there appears to be, if my understanding of this is correct, and that's what I'm asking for a clarification, my understanding is there's no room for error. So if it's, if they underestimated it, they made a mistaken or calculations, or there's unexpected events that affect it, we'll have another problem on our hands in terms of reputation of Mount Pleasant.
Thank you, sir. Robert Lacy? That twelve oh one Shackelford Drive?
Yes, it's in the city limits.
Yes, it is. That's, I was just making sure I was bringing the right number.
Um, I'm not gonna speak to the, the housing thing, because you're gonna have this meeting on September eleventh. I will say that I'm shocked that you read to change the zoning before you have a public meeting, which was supposed to be thirty days after the last meeting. I was, and I believe September eleventh is well past the thirty days. So I don't understand how you can vote. I know what you're doing. You're doing an end around. We'll change the zoning so we can make it legal, and then we can pass everything. From three of you, all I heard about is money. This project, from what the builder said, is gonna take five to seven years to be finished. You may see money in ten years minimum before you see that money. Meanwhile, the water pipes are garbage, the streets are falling apart. So you want us to wait another ten years to fix all that? It's not all about money. Trotwood can't be widened, from what I understand. So you're gonna add all that traffic, make it more dangerous. And I don't believe that a Dollar General, which, how did we get three Dollar Generals in Mount Pleasant? Within five miles? How does that happen? You all approved it, apparently. And I don't consider a Dollar General the juicy egg in a Mexican restaurant. City amenities that are within walking distance. Sorry, doesn't cut it. But y'all are more interested in money. So you're gonna pass it regardless. Every meeting I've been to, nobody has been in favor of this. Nobody, except for the builder. And because you, Mayor, are close personal friends with the family and the builder, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you should be exempt. You said at a meeting that you are friends with the builder and their family. So you should be exempt from voting on this at all. That's all I got to say until September eleventh.
Hey, so, we're gonna quiet down in here. We're gonna do this professionally and very businesslike. There's no need for all this. I would love to respond to that, because I never made that comment. Cheryl Polly? Sixty-four thirty-nine Old Zion Road, is that in the city limits of Mount Pleasant?
It is not, but it's, I'm an adjoining property owner to this sewer system. I do not agree with the R three. Ms. Johnston, you said you didn't realize what was up there until you drove up there. How long did you say you lived here? What did you say?
No, that's, I can't speak.
Okay. Anyway, I thought that's what you said. You've lived here for five years, surely you've driven up Trotwood. Anyway, regardless of that, I'm against the R three, let's just say that. I'll say it again on the September eleventh. Next thing is the little house that's going to clean the water. I cleaned residential new construction for one of the top five residential developers in middle Tennessee. I cleaned houses where the little house was there within sight of the house I was cleaning, the little water cleaning plant. Let me tell you, it stinks. It stinks in the summer. It stinks like sewer. So those of us whose property adjoins it, if nothing else comes from this, we need to have a say in where that little house is. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Griffsy, Bob? I'll ask the same question, I know the answer, but.
I don't live in the city limits, uh, but I buy gas from Mount Pleasant Gas, I'm seeing, I'm services here and and uh, so I didn't really know what I was gonna say till I got down here. And I I got to drive across the old bridge on, and I thought to myself, how wide is this bridge? How wide is this bridge? Well, uh, the fact of the matter is, uh, the uh, infrastructure for this development does not exist. And uh, I don't know how you're getting around that. Uh, you're going to tie yourself to let Columbia provide the water. So what do you do for your Mount Pleasant residents if Columbia doesn't want to provide the water? So I I I really just don't understand how, like, I I really appreciate Councilman's comments that you ought to be providing the services if you're gonna annex the land. Annex the land? I'm fine. I want, everybody wants to make a buck. Uh, developer wants to make a buck? Uh, that's the American way. But they want to annex the land? Okay. It's the R three density zoning. It's not, you can't support it. You can't support what uh, you're gonna ask there. And I I I think you're gonna rue the day that you made the decision to annex it when you can't provide the services for it. Okay?
Thank you, Bob. Robert Murphy? Robert is one fifty-four pots drive in Mount Pleasant, city limits?
Not quite.
Okay.
But I'm a lifelong resident.
Yes.
You all know my father.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Davis, much respect to you, my friend. Bill, nothing personal, you know, you're my friend as well. You know, in our line of work, nothing is free. Only the good Lord above can give benefits for free. Whatever benefit this man is gonna sell us costs. My grandfather, my grandmother, buried in Polk Memorial Gardens, that place is hallowed ground for me. You mentioned Dollar General, you mentioned the Mexican restaurant, Polk Memorial Gardens is right beside it. It's holy ground, as far as I'm concerned, place of peace and rest. Last thing I want to see, I've grown up walking those gardens my whole life. Grandfather died when I was three. The last thing I want to see is Neapolis come down south. We've already seen thirty-one ruined. Do we want Trotwood the same way? Do I want to walk out on that pond, see in the swans, the particle board houses as far as the eye can see? Nobody wants it. My stepbrother, his name is Samuel Emmer Armstrong, eighth generation descendant of Pinewood or Pine Hill, excuse me. You mentioned it's already coming. You know, would everybody jump off a cliff? We don't have to do what they're doing. Okay? I just urge all of you to think about the culture of this county. We have seen it degrade. Who among us can afford any of these houses? It's gonna be people from California, from New York, from Wisconsin. The rednecks on Cross Bridges Road on Polk Lane, this ain't gonna help none of us. As a previous speaker said, they'll get on forty-three, they'll go to Spring Hill, they'll go to Columbia. Is it gonna have, help Murray County? I doubt it. I'll leave you with this. You mentioned growth. Cancer grows as well.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. All right, that's all we had sign up. Uh, board, any board comments? Ms. Lori, you got anything?
I just want to thank you all for coming tonight and expressing yourself. And we look forward to just meet with you again at Mont Pleasant.
Can I ask one question? I just want to ask just a question. At the last meeting, was it not saying that we were gonna have a meeting where everybody could talk? That's the way it was ended. I thought we were gonna have a meeting at the community center where we could all discuss it. And it's like, we care today, and there's, it's a vote. I mean, I I may know, buddy, I live right across from where the suburbs is, that's it's gonna be. But we were completely misinformed this last meeting.
I'll talk to her after the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Lori. She's.
Okay. I think everybody.
I'll talk to you after the meeting. Go ahead.
Ma'am?
I thank everybody for coming. I mean, we all love the city. I have only lived here five years. I drive everywhere. I love where we are, I love this town. So I appreciate you coming, I wish you would have been here Thursday night. I'd encourage folks to do that and be here when we're having in-depth discussions and to really understand, this is not an easy process. It's not easy to sit up here and have somebody, you know, be rated. But I'm a person of faith, and I'm a person who doesn't operate in fear. And I just, I love this town. I am thankful that you're all here tonight, whether you like me or not, it's okay.
All right. Just thankful that y'all come out and spoke your mind. Billy?
Yes, I appreciate all of your coming. Like I said earlier, nobody's making phone calls. So when you vote on something, you have to do what's best for the people that elected you in here. So nobody has called me and said anything. So I have to vote what's best for the citizens of Mount Pleasant. And thank you all for coming.
Same here, I've gotta look at what's best for the community as a whole. And that's where I landed, so leave it at that. Hearing nothing else. One last thing, music on the porch Saturday night at the Serat's home, I'm trying to remember who's playing.
It's the band that played.
Cord Martin, he's good.
Full on brass, everything's really.
I would encourage all of you to come out and see that that is privately funded by a large group of individuals. Easy, man.
He's in what?
In that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Have you got a seven, all those in favor?
Aye.